Okay, I'd like to call the meeting to order. Before we get moving this evening, I'd like to just note the passing of a member of the Oyster River community, Jay Rasmussen. And Suzanne Philpone is going to say a few words about Jay.
I just wanted to say that it really, truly is a sad loss that we've had in our community. Jay was a graduate of 2018. She truly, her kind, kind and generous spirit that she spread throughout our community will be missed, but it, it, it has been felt and it will, it will continue to spread. So my, my deepest condolences go to the family and her close friends. And I just would like to thank all of the people at the, within the district, Dr. Morris, Kim Wolf, Andy Lathrup, and Ryan Long, who are here to help communicate with the family and to connect us all. So, thank you.
Thank, thank you. And it was very moving to go to her memorial service and to hear so many of her friends talk about times when they were the, sitting alone in the cafeteria and you don't have anybody to talk to and you'd just like to be swallowed into a black hole. And Jay would come up and befriend them and introduce them to her other friends and they may become part of a Dungeons and Dragons Friday night meeting at their house. And just a very generous, giving person, so it's a sad loss. Our first order of business is the approval of the agenda. And I'd like to just make one suggestion, since I think a number of people are here to, for the discussion of Indigenous, changing to Indigenous Peoples' Day. If we could move that discussion right up to after announcements, commendations, and comments, would that be all right with everybody? So then, okay? So with that change, could I have a motion to approve the agenda? Denise?
A motion to approve the agenda with that change.
By Denise or second, second by Al? All those in favor? Five in favor. The agenda's approved with that change. Moving to public comment. The ground rules are you have three minutes. Identify yourself before you speak. Could I just have a show of hands? How many are, people like, would like to speak? One, two, three, four. Okay, three minutes. So who'd like to start?
Don't be shy.
Don't be shy. Somebody's got to start. Nancy?
Hi, I'm Nancy Lambert and I live in Durham. I want to thank you all for your service to our school district and the time and care you put into making an exceptional learning environment for our students. And thanks also to Dr. Morris for proposing the adoption of Indigenous Peoples' Day on the school calendar. There's a lot in our world and in our country that we can't control. We can't control white supremacists walking down the street extolling hate. We can't control political leaders who use racial bias for their own benefit. We can't control a president who insults Indigenous people by calling a political rival Pocahontas. We can't control a National Football League team, the Washington Redskins, from embracing and defending a racial slur as tradition. We had no control over the genocide of the Indigenous people, not just in this country, but around, throughout the world. And we could not control the European expansion, a boon to many of our ancestors. That was a disaster for Native people. And we can't even control the racist imagery in our own post office. But what we can control is what we teach our kids. We can define and embrace our own values and how we choose to express them. We can commit ourselves to honoring Indigenous people, their culture and their contributions to the world. And we can also remember what happened to them. We can remember our government's role in crimes against Indigenous communities. And we can remember truth and dispel the mythologies that many of us were taught. By adopting Indigenous Peoples' Day on Columbus Day, we will be teaching our kids that we value the worth and dignity of all people and that we have a responsibility to truth and to justice. Thank you.
Live on Hoyt Drive. And I'm a member of the community. There's several ways that this issue of the Indigenous Peoples' Day possibility is important to me. I am for it strongly. I'm right now reading as many books as I can on this because of outside things that I'm working on with churches and things like that, who are looking at this very much too. The book I'm right now reading is First Thing and Lasting by Parker Palmer. First thing and lasting, an interesting notion, isn't it? That the people who write books was, certainly were not the Indigenous people. They had an oral history. But the English and all that followed, after the Mayflower, et cetera, were people who wrote. And when they wrote, they wrote about the first church being established. Who do you think they thought about having the first church? It was them. They wrote, and I'm reading in this book, an amazing summary of the number of times that it was only the writers who were introducing the notion that they were the first ones there. As they do this, and the accumulated notion of first becomes normal as you read it, you realize that that is how writers, authors, and an entire culture can take over and vanish a previous culture. Especially if you start also speaking about the last Indian that was here, the last tribe that was here, and there's a whole series of last. It's a beautiful way to actually vanish the previous people who were ahistoric. They didn't have any history. There was no way we could build on that. While the people who came added the dates, the times, exactly what was given, and produced a history only from their point of view. So that was extremely touching and is touching to me, this notion that there's a group of people with incredible intelligence, skills, medical, spiritual, educational, and otherwise, who simply were not listened to. So that's part one of what I want to mention. The second one is a much more personal one. My son in his college years spent six months in the Pine Ridge Indian Reservation with a Lakota, with a specific Lakota family. His job was to go there and build greenhouses so that their seedlings would be able to sprout earlier, have a greater productivity. But what he learned from them is still in my family to this day. They showed him the value of what a sweat lodge was. Sounds like a place where you go to get washed. It's far deeper, far more beautiful. This comes from a father who spent his entire time as a therapist. I ran group therapy, family therapy, et cetera, for years and years before going to the sweat lodge that my son ran. And in that three hours of incredible heat, quite a bit of pain, I learned the value of silence. Every single person spoke. They spoke from the heart. They spoke of tremendously important things to them and things you would not imagine they say to people they didn't know. And the response was not to respond. The response was to absorb and give them the respect to do it. And I began to understand for the first time the notion of a culture that has deep respect for each other.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, your time was up.
Oh, it is, okay.
Sorry to silence, since you're bringing up silence.
Thanks. I didn't know, and I didn't bring a watch.
That's all right, fine.
Thank you for your time and thank you very much for listening to us tonight in this.
Thank you very much.
My name is Kathleen Blake and I am a member of the Kowasak Traditional Band of the Sovereign Abenaki Nation Councilwoman. And I am the Chair of the New Hampshire Commission on Native American Affairs. I'm also the mother of two Oyster River graduates. I lived in this community for 25 years and so it's near and dear to my heart. I'm here to urge you to give, instituting Indigenous Peoples' Day your most serious consideration for two reasons. One is that our ancestors have been on this land for over 13,000 years and get very little recognition of that fact. The history of this land did not begin when Columbus sailed to the, to the New World. So it would be an honoring for the people that have been here for many, many years. And the second reason is I urge you to do everything you can to learn about Christopher Columbus and his, his people. They were not as they are portrayed to be when you go through school. And I'm hoping that the children here learn the true history of Christopher Columbus. They raped women. They sold nine and 10-year-old girls into the sex slave trade. They murdered infants. They kidnapped many, many people and brought them and sold them into slavery in Europe. And this is who we celebrate in October every year. That's not to disparage the Italian community in any way. It wasn't them, it was him. But the fact remains that we are celebrating a rapist, a murderer, and a kidnapper. And we are ignoring the people who have been here for over 13,000 years. So I urge you to give this matter your most serious consideration. If, I do live in the area, I live in Dover now, and if there's anything that I can do to support your efforts towards educating the children here in terms of Indigenous peoples, I would be happy to volunteer. I'm a retired school principal, so I have lots of time on my hands now. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
My name is Paul Puleo. I'm the Sogama or the Principal Speaker of the Kowasak Band, the Penaka Kanabnakaki people. And with me is my wife, the Sogama Squaw Denise. She's going to hand out a little thing about who we are. We've been involved in, in this area about educational reasons for the last few years. We've been working with UNH, trying to develop a broader perspective of the history of this particular region because everything's based in the Oyster River massacre and it makes us look like we were nothing but cut throats. And the truth of the matter is that we had a rich history that was rewritten by English conquerors who, who put the narrative in place that we were savages when in fact we were not savages at all. We'd been existing here since 13,000 years and we've had a rich history in this particular area. What's interesting is that we've found, when we've raised the issue of mascots and Indigenous Peoples' Day, it becomes a political hot potato. And it shouldn't be. I mean, this is not Indigenous people versus Italians. This is a matter of respecting the fact that there were great contributions made to this, the Americas by Indigenous people. Many of the food sources that we use today were all Indigenous to this continent and not to Europe. And a lot of these things have been overlooked because, as a lot of the colonials said, by the grace of God, we came upon big gardens with corn growing in this area and God gave them to us. Well, it wasn't that way. These were things that were stolen from us and forced us off these lands. We really appreciate the fact that Durham as a, as a city and a town has gone forward and taken a progressive step for Indigenous Peoples' Day. But we have found very quickly that educating our politicians and educating our children about the real history of New Hampshire's is more important at this point. This is not a political, you know, House bill that we're going to force through Concord. This is going to be an educational process where we teach our children that we have a very rich history going back 13,000 years and not starting at 1700. And I think that's very important. A school district like this would be most welcome to have our resources. If you don't know already, we've been in your elementary schools, both Mastway and Marahormit, doing educational programs for Indigenous instrumentation and music and dance. So we've already been in your community. You probably didn't know it, but we'd like to get a little recognition with Indigenous Peoples' Day on your calendar so that next time we come back here, it will mean more to the children than in your, in your district. Part of our program with UNH is trying to develop a K through 12 curriculum for the state, but it's, it's, it's a quite an involved, complex issue to rewrite history to give a Native perspective to New Hampshire, but we're working on that. If there's anything we can do to assist the town of Durham, we're here, we provide a lot of services and narratives and presentations, and we have a rich resource of historical material that we can share with your community. In fact, I brought about a dozen books on Columbus alone. And if you only open one or two pages, you realize this man was a man of his times. He was really the first slaver that really took slaves from the New World back to Europe. I mean, the Spanish, which, who he worked for, were merciless on starting the slave trade in, in the entire globe. So we're honoring the wrong things. It's not a matter of, you know, national Italian heritage pride. This is a matter of, we're honoring the wrong guy and we're war, war, you know, honoring the wrong things.
I'm sorry, I'm going to have to ask you that.
That's fine. But just remember, a lot of the Fuji today came from us originally.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hi, my name's Vaughn Gudette. I wanted to thank you and everyone that's speaking. And I am a preschool teacher and I completely agree with him. It'd be wonderful to have this being taught in our school system as Indigenous Peoples' Day, excuse me. I live in New Hampshire and I would like to have Columbus Day renamed to Indigenous Peoples' Day. I have a strong pride in my ancestry and I am a descendant of the Blackfeet Nation. Growing up in New Hampshire as a child, I was keenly aware of the injustices committed against Native Americans, this being our nation first. Before Columbus arrived, there were millions of Indigenous people in the United States. The Wabanaki, known as the People of the Dawn, lived in New Hampshire long before colonists arrived. Indigenous people here thrived in harmony with Gudakina, Gudakina, which means world in Wabanaki. Their culture was rich with tradition and honor and respect for their people, land, and wildlife. And I think the children would thrive learning that. Because we don't want to repeat the history, we have to teach what happened, what was the truth. For me and many Native American people, Columbus Day is not a day of joy, it's a day of mourning. During this period of terrorism, Indigenous people were massacred, raped, and tortured. In fact, it was genocide that occurred in our nation. Changing this holiday to Indigenous Peoples' Day offers honor and respect to our people. As Columbus Day, the day only marks a false representation of what happened in the past. We must never, ever repeat this. By changing the name to Indigenous Peoples' Day, you will offer truth. It's a chance for New Hampshire residents, Indigenous and non-Indigenous, to honor those who came before them and respect Indigenous peoples who survived to carry on such rich Native traditions for our future seven generations. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm a graduate student at Antioch University and one of the members of the New Hampshire Coalition for Indigenous Peoples' Day. Thanks for hearing me out. So why do we celebrate Columbus Day as a state and federal holiday? The original impetus for the, the holiday was to commemorate his having landed in the New World, which is often framed as a discovery. And while its discovery certainly opened the West up to exploitation of colonial Europe, it was certainly not new knowledge by any stretch of the imagination. 500 years prior to the first voyage of Columbus, Leif Erikson landed in America. And the Native peoples of the Americas had inhabited this New World for probably close to 14,000 years. And essentially, we're celebrating a mythos based upon an achievement that's not based in reality and cementing that mythos as a false narrative that we continue to teach our children. If we celebrate Columbus Day as a means to lionize a man that discovered a new land on behalf of Spain and as a whole, Europe, yet historically speaking, didn't really discover anything, aren't we celebrating a falsehood? And if we're not celebrating his discovery, given that it can't be categorized as such, what does that leave for us to celebrate? It leaves nothing other than just his actions. And his actions were pretty brutal. I don't know if you guys have read his diary or familiar with any of the passages, and I'll just read a short one here. He said that "They brought us parrots and balls of cotton and spears and many other things, which we, which they exchanged for glass beads and hawksbells. They willingly traded everything they owned. They were well-built with good bodies and handsome features. They did not bear arms and did not know them. For I showed them a sword and they took it by the edge and cut themselves out of ignorance. They have no iron, their spears are made of cane. They would make fine servants. With 50 men, we could subjugate them all and make them do whatever we want." And that's what happened. So Columbus returned to the Caribbean on his second voyage, prepared for war. He came with 17 ships, 1,500 men, and modern weapons. He demanded that gold, food, and women be provided. And when the Lucian refused, he cut their ears and noses off to serve as warnings about not following through on those demands. And when the natives openly rebelled against Columbus's demands, they brutally ramped up sort of their countermeasures. I'm going to actually spare you sort of the graphic detail here, but it is pretty graphic and I really would suggest that people read this on their own. So, and as was previously mentioned, it is really fair to say that Columbus is the father of the transatlantic slave trade and did, in mention in his own diary, sex slavery of children as young as nine and 10 years old, which should be abhorrent for anybody to hear. So to say that Columbus's treatment of the Indigenous peoples of the Caribbean was brutal and torturous is an understatement. And if history demonstrates to us all that Columbus simply discovered what had already been discovered by European 500 years prior and by the Indigenous some 14,000 years earlier, I argue that we're really celebrating is that behavior that I just kind of give you a brief glimpse of. Teaching our children that Columbus was a great explorer worthy of lionation is to do a disservice to history and a means to continue the marginalization and systematic exploitation of a people living under the thumb of colonial and then state oppression for more than 500 years. If we're to celebrate the heritage of America, the reality is that heritage should start with the Indigenous people that first live here. And to properly honor the country that arose out of the intersection of those two very different cultures, we must first start to respect the one that predated it.
Thank you.
Thanks for your time.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Garrett Chapman. We just, my family and I just recently moved to Madberry. I have two young daughters, two years old and four months old. And we had a lot of options to, to choose for a community and we chose this Oyster River community mainly because of, well, one of the reasons was in part of all the signs that we saw in People's Front's yard stating that this is a welcoming community. My family and I were, we're for the Indigenous People's Day. I myself am a member of the Mohegan Tribe of Uncasville, Connecticut. I am raising my two children to be proud of their, their native background, to be involved with their tribe. And it's really a tremendous honor that we're even having this dialogue up here. This is the first that I've ever heard of a community really welcoming this. So I appreciate that. I appreciate your consideration. And, you know, my children have not entered the school district yet, but certainly if I can help in any way and really, you know, be involved in this process, it would be a tremendous honor. So I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Kitty Marple, Chair of the Durham Town Council. I unfortunately am going to repeat some of the stuff that's already been said, but I feel like my perspective is a little bit different. I do thank all of you for your service to our school district. You wage a constant struggle to spend our tax dollars wisely, to educate our children as efficiently as possible with excellence. As you are probably aware, the town of Durham changed the name of Columbus Day Holiday last year to Indigenous Peoples' Day. The impetus for this change was an ongoing discussion with descendants of local Indigenous people who point out that they are depicted in a negative light in the lobby of the Durham Post Office. The discussion prompted me to reexamine my own understanding of the plight of their ancestors. I believe that Native Americans bore the brunt of negative outcomes due to the European expansion from the 15th century onward. Indigenous people occupied this area for more than 13,000 years and their best interests were not considered when explorers landed on our shores. The renaming of Columbus Day was not meant as an insult to any ethnic group. It was meant to acknowledge that people need to be treated with humanity as individuals. It is also a reminder that learning about other groups of people may help foster better relations and outcomes of disagreements. We cannot change the rich and remarkable history of the United States, no matter how far back it goes, but we can admit that it was not without conflict and loss. Good luck with your decision, should you choose to make this a priority. It is an emotional issue and should not be taken lightly. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all. Next, we have the approval of the minutes for July 18th. Could I have a motion on that? Brian?
Motion to approve the regular meeting minutes from July 18th.
Moved by Brian, seconded by Denise. Are there changes?
I have one I can get in, but. It's page four. Just when we made the motion, there we go. Just opening it up so I can find it. Three, four. Okay. When we made the motion regarding the options for the middle school and we just said approve, where is it? Oh, okay, Al Helen, moved to support the options of the report. It doesn't say anything about what those options are, so I would just like to insert the words, "to either build new onsite or offsite." That way anyone--
Or renovate.
No, we, no, it wasn't.
Did we eliminate? I thought we did all three we were investigating.
Well, three is if it doesn't get voted in.
No, I'm trying to remember like--
No, what we said we would do is we would, during the process, we would investigate the costs associated with renovation.
Yes.
Have that information, but it wasn't one of the options.
Okay.
Okay. Cause, so you investigate that, but endorse the two options.
Yeah.
Is that fair?
Yeah, that's fair.
Okay.
Okay.
So do you have that?
I do.
Okay. Other changes? Hearing then, all those in favor of the minutes with, with the changes, please raise your hand. Sorry.
And I wasn't here.
You weren't here? Okay. So four, four, and so you abstain, right?
Right.
So it should be four, zero, one. So announcements, commendations, comments from the district? Are there any?
Yeah, there are.
So there's been a lot going on in the high school over the summer. We've had a lot of activity and I just want to highlight a few things. And I have a memo I'm going to give you that has some information as well. As far as facilities is concerned, Merrick, Kirk, and the custodial crew have been very busy getting the school ready for the students and faculty return. And you can see that as you walk down here in the hallways, we have, our new LED lighting system has been put in and it's much brighter and the light, I do, I do believe that that will impact us all in a positive way. Our gymnasium climbing wall has been going in and it's been, being installed currently and that should be finished next week.
So is this a sense of humor that you've injected in this? Our kids will be climbing up?
Yes. Literally, they will be climbing the walls when they get back.
But not the teachers. But not the teachers.
Well, we may be climbing as well. Yeah. IT has done a wonderful job shifting the middle school laptops to the high school, and we're getting those ready so that we will be two to one within the high school. Each department will have additional carts. We're very fortunate to have a new Bell and Intercom system put into place, as we liked to call the old one Bessie, because she would make a mooing sound throughout the school year, has been removed, so we're very excited to learn about our new intercom system and all the possibilities that it holds for us. New Hampshire Department of Safety, Division of Homeland Security, and Emergency Management came this summer to do an assessment of the high school, and we are waiting for a report back from them, and that is in regards to the safety of the facility, and they will have recommendations for us. We have a lot going on with our new Bell schedule and our master schedule. Master scheduling is a full-year process, however, in the summertime, we, kind of, the pedal goes to the metal and we work very hard to get our schedule out. And I just really would like to thank Mike, Mark, Heather, and Sue Johnson for their exhaustive work to get the master schedule completed and to get our new Bell schedule working within Power School in an effective way. Flex scheduling and adaptive scheduling will be a very, it will be beneficial for all of us, and we look forward to the training that we're going to be receiving next week. Along those lines have been, I had a parent coffee and conversation in regards to the new Bell schedule, and we had some families come out and a student come to have a discussion. I sent a letter home, and then there was also a press release in relationship to that. So we've been working very hard to get the new schedule going. And lastly, I just want to mention a few pieces about our faculty and the admin team. The faculty really has been working all summer long. I have had people in the building collaborating about competencies, working together on a freshman collaborative. We had a group of 10 people attend a two-day, a three-day workshop done by Two Revolution on design and learning, future learning. So there have been some fabulous things happening within the building, and I just really want to point out that we appreciate the work that the faculty does over the summer. Councilors completed their first freshman boot camp this week. We had two days, and Al was present for one of those. So we just, they did a fabulous job putting together something new. It was a lot of information for families, and I think it really was beneficial, and I just want to thank them for all of their work with that. And they also did a boot camp, application boot camp for seniors for two days this week as well, and we had seniors coming in, working on the application process with our counselors as well. So they've been very busy. And we are, as an admin team, we've been working on our strategic plan with the other schools and with the SAU, and we also have been working on our goals for next year, and on the other side of the memo that I gave you, it has an outline of some of the work that we've been doing over the summer to get ready for next school year in regards to grounding our goals within our mission of the school. Well, thank you.
Jay Rashard, the principal of the middle school. I'm looking forward to getting the students back in just two weeks. As I joked with Tom coming in, this is one of the last couple days I can continue to wear shorts to work before I back to ties and pants. Those are the only two things I really don't like about my job, just so you know, ties and pants. Couple quick notes in terms of what's going on. It's been a very, very busy summer. Camp Reach was extremely successful. I know Todd does a lot of hard work behind the scenes to organize that. We had close to 200 students participating. One of my favorite camps is the cooking camp, where I get to sample some of the goods. We've got a lot of good up-and-coming young cooks. Also, our extended school year program, where we have students working on their reading, writing, math. Their culminating activity was to donate a variety of things to the SPCA over in Stratum, a lot of really cool stuff the kids created. One of the neat things that they created is actually a goat playground, and it's like this big, huge cage thing with a variety of things on it that goats like to play with, from brushes to you clean your deck with. I guess it helps, they like to use that for grooming. So just a lot of really cool stuff. As you probably already know, the student laptops arrived, so we have 700 student laptops in our library. We're working on a plan to distribute those. Attached to this document is several pages of our work with our one-to-one PLC, and our final meeting is on this upcoming Monday and how we're going to distribute the devices. There's also like good documentation in terms of how parents can have conversations about the devices and how the kids should be using them at home, et cetera. So if you've got a moment, please check that out. I'd be glad to send electronic copies as well. As of today, I'm always enthused when I hear, I heard the gentleman say he has two young kids moving to the district. We have, as of right now, we have 32 new students who've moved into the district. We'll have that new student orientation next week. On a separate note, Dr. Morris always asks me this question, well, how many do we have leave, Jay? We've actually had 21 departures, so it's a plus 11 so far for this year. We've been doing a lot of work in terms of our competency work over the summer. We have meetings next week for that, so we're going to create a thorough timeline for the school board, so you see the work we're going to work on this upcoming year in terms of our reports and working with families and students. And lastly, as Suzanne said, it's a myth that our good teachers take the summer off. One of the things I look at is throughout my learning plan, I'm on a professional development, our staff are participating in. I attended the workshop with Suzanne and the high school staff, as well as my middle school staff. I was really enthused to work with other school districts locally. It's always a lot of fun to see and work and help solve some common problems, and also a lot of our staff are participating in UNH courses over the summer, so they've been really busy, and I'll see them Monday, the 27th, so.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Have you informed, I assume parents have been informed about the new cellphone rules?
Yep, that's actually coming up this week. I wanted to make sure you saw these, and Dr. Morris approved these documents.
Okay.
So these will be going out, as well as our new cellphone policy.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay.
Thank you.
We have been very busy this summer as well. Moheramit hosted the extended school year for the elementary school students. We had almost 50 students come to us Tuesday through Thursday for five weeks. It was a very exciting place to be. They really kept us on our toes, and you could see really great social-emotional learning, academic learning going on all the time for all the students who attend Mastway and Moheramit. It was really wonderful. Through all of that, we had a lot of facilities work happening at Moheramit, and kudos to Mr. Rizicky and the facility staff, and Mr. McGinnis and the custodians here at our building. We were able to have all of those classes happening while our windows were being taken out and replaced, while our lights were being replaced, while work is going on in the library. And it was very easy, based on the schedules they gave us and the communication they had with us and the teachers and the students. It was terrific. We are really getting ready for two educational changes this year in our schools. As we spoke about last year at some of the school board meetings, for social-emotional learning, we are moving forward as a K4 district with a committee that was made up of Moheramit and Mastway staff and administrators in beginning a consistent SEL program in our classrooms that would be taught by classroom teachers, and we are testing a program called Open Circle. And so we had teachers from Moheramit and Mastway attend professional development throughout the summer, and we're getting ready to have them tested in their classrooms throughout the year, and we're organizing ways for the rest of our staff to learn from them so that in the spring, we can make an informed decision about a step forward for our schools. We're also going to begin using the DESA, Social Emotional Learning Assessment Tool. That was also part of the presentation that Dr. Long gave to you in the spring as a way for us to see the needs of individual students in the social-emotional realm. The other change that's happening that we're really excited about is we're bringing team time to the elementary schools, something that teachers at the middle school and the high school have the opportunity to meet, and with an administrative focus, really look at student data and student progress and collaboratively work together to make choices about how to best meet the needs of all of our students and their individual needs. We're starting that here at the elementary schools, and we're really excited about it. And lastly, to echo the high school and the middle school, our teachers were working all summer, thanks to budgeted money for summer projects and the remaining professional development days from last year. And I think what was really exciting was the collaboration to see Mastway and Moheramit teachers choosing to work together to collaborate for grade-wide or K4-wide programs, then bring back to both schools and really get that synergy going. It was great.
And just to add into that, we have a number of teachers working with Chris Hall on his sabbatical leave, which is great, and actually was even division, I believe, between all four schools. So the group he has working together is just amazing.
Great.
So just to not reiterate exactly what David said and whatever and I said, you probably know the biggest change at Mastway has been Mastway. We are fully under construction. We have been meeting every other week with the construction team to make sure that we're on track, to make sure we have all the questions answered, to make sure that everything is ordered on time. It's been going seamlessly. I was actually, I was totally amazed with the short amount of time in which windows were taken out, frames were reframed, put in, windows were installed, seams were in. It was just absolutely amazing to watch every day. It was like so exciting to go in and walk through and play with the new lights, and I was walking up and down hallways, putting lights on and off. On top of that, the whole foyer entrance area that we've been working on is making progress. It is, we are on track to have it, I guess I'd say kind of buttoned up with the new paneling and whatnot. There are some pictures in your packets that I gave you. We will not be able to use the entrance, the main entrance, for the beginning of the year, but since we have the additional doorway on the side of the building that was original and we actually reopened, we will use that, and I'll be sending out a notice to parents once I know that is actually totally complete for the start of the school year. We also have been making sure that we check in with our local support staff, fire, and police to make sure they give us the AOK that we're all set to continue on. We have, they put up great, if you haven't been by Mastway, they put up some really great barrier fencing. I was very, very pleased with that, which remains. It's going to be shifted a bit so that we can still have the buses use the front loop, drop kids off, come in the side door and that sort of thing, so it's not too much of a change of our routine. And so it's, of course, the safest possible measures of all. Again, in the back, over the summer, they have been able to use the back entrance way for trucks and that, whatnot. That will cease when students get back to school so that that is all partitioned off again, and it's just going to be safe until it gets wrapped up hopefully this fall. We are going to be looking forward to having a ribbon-cutting ceremony, so I'll keep you all up to date when we choose a date and time that works for everybody. It's just been an amazing progress. Again, hats off to Jim Rizicky, I really am so impressed with he and his team, the custodial staff. It's been very challenging because they're used to going in in a systematic way and cleaning hall after hall, and they just can't do that. So they're doing their very best, and they're doing a great job, and really staying busy. I do think they'll have some late nights coming up, but they're ready to go. I'd also like to say thank you to our teachers who have been extremely patient. Our contracting crew gave us the thumbs up to have teachers start coming in on Monday to really start working on classrooms. That gives them not much time. Elementary teachers generally spend a lot of time setting up their classrooms, so I appreciate the staff for their patience, and I said to staff, and my first note back to them is, "Think, simplify. Make things simple on yourselves this year. It's okay, it'll all be great, and we'll get going." So, we're excited.
So Carrie, can I just add to yours, just so the board knows, Carrie's been in contact with Elisa Huppi in terms of the bus routes, and the construction will cause a delay in the delivery and pickup of children because she's going out the side building, and so she's been very strategic. Carrie's been very strategic with Elisa about how to approach that in a way that our students will always be safe. So generally, when there wasn't any construction, the buses will pull up, and then the buses would just disperse the kids that are on the buses. During the construction and probably until just about Thanksgiving, the buses will pull up, but she's only going to allow two buses to disperse kids at a time, which will take longer for the children to get on and off the bus. But we're doing that in order to be able to control the pathway for the kids into the school. So in terms of Carrie giving credit to a lot of people, I also want to recognize how meticulous she's been in trying to lay out plans that work for her staff and put the safety of our children as a top priority. So, thanks, Carrie.
And just as a reminder, the funding for the front of the building was due to grant money that was really offered because one of the criteria was that we had gone through the Homeland Security audit years back, so.
And, and sadly, sorry, I forgot to mention that this summer, Moheramit went through that same process, so the--
As did high school, as did the middle school.
Correct. New Hampshire Department of Safety, Homeland Security came, met with myself, representatives from facilities, the SAU office, and a thank you, of course, to Chief McGann and Assistant Fire Chief Jim Davis for coming as well, and we were able to have a really excellent conversation about Moheramit, our policies, procedures, our facility. A report has just been sent to me. I'll be summarizing that and presenting that for you at our August 29 meeting, and we can talk about how that impacts our future budget and all the other plans for Moheramit.
So is there possibility of money for these renovations?
The commissioner has been very supportive of funds for safety improvements in the schools, and I'm encouraged that he will seek funds from the legislature during this upcoming session. There are no funds available right now, but by the time we work our way through, hopefully, Moheramit and high school, funds might be available. There's no guarantee, though, because those funds were a result of unexpended balances in the state budget, and so unless they dedicate money, and if they use that same process, it's dependent on how frugal each department has been at the state level.
Okay, thank you.
And the modulars are gone.
And--
And I walked--
We waved them goodbye.
--the modulars get split apart and driven away.
Totally expected Al Helen was going to get a standing ovation.
Yeah, we've been waiting for this for a long time, haven't we, Al?
For those two days, I hope nobody was driving on any road anywhere in Moheramit as they drove those on.
It was a tight turn as they went around the corner of Moheramit.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. So have announcements, comments, and commendations from the board? I'm so, I'm sorry, I'm so, sorry, 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 sir.
I just wanted to give a quick update on athletics. I'm sure if you looked out on the field tonight, you saw a lot of kids out there. We have about 300 kids registered in the high school for athletics this fall and close to 200 in the middle school, so a lot of kids participating. Looking at three soccer teams potentially for girls and three soccer teams for boys, so our numbers are really healthy and strong. The football, we had 16 kids come out at Portsmouth. The inaugural Clipper Cat football game against London area is on August 31st, if anybody's interested in going, 7:00 PM. I tend to be there, and I know a lot of other teachers and administrators are going to go, too, so just a quick update on that, and that was--
I just think there was an incredible recognition by Portsmouth of a cooperative team. They literally changed the name of their team to represent both Portsmouth High School and Oyster River, so--
Absolutely.
I think we chose wisely.
Yep, absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you. Others? Okay, announcements, comments, and commendations from the board? None? Denise?
I just want to say thank you to the folks that came out tonight to speak during public comments, and I know some folks drove aways to express their thoughts, and definitely it's very appreciated.
Okay. Al?
So as Suzanne mentioned, I did go to freshman boot camp, and it's no small task since it's my third kid, and I really was not really pushing to go, and I stayed for the opening speech, and I was like, oh, boy, you know, I don't know if I can keep going, and they were like, no, 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 stay for the social-emotional thing, it's going to be really good, and it was. So they had a TED Talk in there, which really has been something we've talked around this table a lot, which was how kids are overscheduling and trying to check off boxes and rushing through their high school experience, and I think what we've talked about over and over again is that we're not, we're trying to foster your intellectual curiosity, not extinguish it. And it's like, and the other thing I think that was really important that comes out of that is that when your kids walk out of Oyster River, what we want them to be able to do is to self-advocate, to work for themselves, because you're not going to be there for all that time. So I thought it was-- So I thought it was really good. It was a good introduction to something we've been talking about for a long time. I thought it was interesting, the questions that came from parents afterwards, they were still anxious and they all really revolved around power school. And I think going forward for the year, clearly the advisory flex period is something that is, it's going to be a need to be communicated to them, because parents were kind of like, do I go to counseling if I don't understand how the grades are going? Do I go to the teacher? Do I go to advisory? So I think that is going to be a process going forward. And I, I think it also kind of sunk into me when you looked at, I mean, they had by month, like suicide prevention and, you know, different topics. But I think the actual nuts and bolts of advisory is going to be a lot more work. It's not just like you show up there anymore. It's going to take really active participation with the faculty members that's there, reaching out to their 12 students. And so I think, I think it's kind of a paradigm shift that we're coming. It's not just remediation, it's also about trying to introduce more of a, of an individualized learning coming in. So I think it's this exciting thing, but it's going to be a lot of work.
Others? Okay. So we had moved the resolution on Indigenous Peoples' Day up to be the next topic of conversation. So Kenny?
Like Denise, I'd like to thank everyone who took the time to come and speak tonight. And I found that the words were offered with a perspective that was greatly appreciated. A lot of emotion was spoken with and a lot of respect. And being part of Durham County Council as well, and when this issue was something that we were considering, it was something I was very supportive and I would really love to see the school board endorse that as well. A few of the speakers mentioned the Americas, and I think that's a very important thing. It's not called Native American Day, it's called Indigenous Peoples' Day, because what went on in our country went on through the Americas. And Indigenous Peoples' Day is really a movement that, that I think we should be a part of, of recognizing Indigenous people throughout the world, whose cultures have been decimated by the arrival of people coming to their land. With the town, you know, I think we, we talked a lot about it and I think it's important, we made the move. I think we as a school district have that very unique ability to build curriculum around this and make it rather than just a change in the name of the day, but make sure that we have learning that's associated with it. And as we did in this last year, when we were faced with a racial incident that happened, we embraced it, we reached out to the community, we made that something that we were able to build constructively off of it, hopefully making all of us better people. And with this, I would really like to incorporate that same sort of response. And, and if it's appropriate, I'd like to move now that we adopt the change in name and we call what has been called Columbus Day Indigenous Peoples' Day.
Moved by Kenny, is there a second? Second by Al? Okay, it's on the table. Denise?
And I definitely am supportive, but I just know that we do have two members who are not here tonight, and this is the first time that this has been brought before the school board. So, you know, as much as, and again, it's not because I don't support it, I do, but I'm just wondering if perhaps we should wait until our next meeting.
I'd rather see that, that we have to go over it all again to bring them up to speed.
I'm sorry?
I'd rather, I'd rather Michael and Dan be here, so we don't have to bring, bring them up to speed again next time around with all the information we're going to talk about tonight. So I don't feel comfortable voting on them without hearing what they have to say.
I think I would agree that we should, you know, we should, typically we'd have something, we lay it over at least one meeting, and so I think that would be appropriate here. But I, I think I'm so totally supportive of this, you know, and I appreciate what people have said. And I remember as reading a biography of Alexander Humboldt, you know, who was explorer and really an opponent of slavery in the Americas and just his documentation of slavery. And I think our perception of slavery is slavery in this country, but slavery was a phenomenon in the Southern Hemisphere as well. And so, and I think Kenny, that's kind of your point, to take that broader perspective. So, I'm, I think this is absolutely a good idea. I think with two members absent, we should, I don't know what the, you know, the motions-
Postpone. Just table or postpone it, till next.
I think it's postponed.
Yeah, postpone is what we're trying to do. So I, actually I've, like Kenny, I've been through this once before and it was kind of a, an interesting thing, and I think Nancy kind of pointed out, there was a lot of things that we couldn't control. And we spent an amazing amount of time talking about the mural in the post office and it's, because it's on federal land, there was really no way we could change anything about it. And so that kind of changed our focus to what we did have control over. And I think when we, on the town side, we finessed our way around what to call this. I mean, we, we at one point had come up with the Age of Exploration and Indigenous People, which is a really long holiday, that kind of, I think we reached the point where we were like, wait a second. What we really are trying to do is look at the history that's really important to the New England area, and the starting point really is Indigenous people. And it's like, learning about Indigenous people, because it's just such an incredibly rich history in this area, and then how the interactions of the Europeans with them came and changed and influenced our area. I think that that was clearly what we all said, that's what we want to do. And I think, in my mind, I always, kind of what Kenny was saying, I do not want the beginning of October just to be the first long weekend that you get an escape from the start of the school year. That it really does mean something educationally, that we learn something about our history. And so I think it's, it's a great step that we do this and we should really utilize it. And I think, I'm more than willing to wait, because I do like Michael and Dan to weigh in, but I fully support changing the name to Indigenous People Day.
Can I just ask, how, where did this come from? I just showed up on the agenda. What brought us to this, where we are today?
So, I had community members reach out to me and I, as always with agenda building, I run it by Denise and Tom and say, this is, this outreach has happened. Think that the outreach was a direct result of the work that the town of Durham did and passing it. And I also think that this work is very in line with the work we did around our racism policy and, you know, several years ago around our transgender policy. There's a pattern of recognition in, by the school board of efforts to recognize a disparity and, and recognize, I guess the word I would use that I heard in the testimony is truth. And so the parents reached out to me, community members reached out to me, I shared it with Tom and Denise, that's how it got on the agenda.
So we could do two things, we could have a motion to postpone, or we could withdraw the motion and then we could remake the motion next meeting.
I think the better motion is to postpone.
Okay.
Because Kenny's made the motion.
Okay.
Postpone.
Good, motion to postpone then?
So I'll make a motion to postpone.
Moved by Al, so a second?
I'll second.
Second, okay.
Tom, just before we leave this, so that I can just explain to the audience, because they're not always here. Typically, the board takes two meetings to take action. One is exactly what happened tonight, presentation, discussion, thoughts back and forth, and then they process. And then the next meeting, which is always two weeks later, they usually take their vote. So, I didn't want anybody to leave here thinking, what happened? I'm trying to make sure that you guys understand our process.
I think the other thing too, is that we tried to get everybody at the table to get a chance. It's like, there are two people that are missing, we want them to weigh in, but I think that's just a fair way to do it.
And also when we, I would anticipate we'll have a vote.
Yeah.
You know, I think probably a vote in the next meeting. So, so this is not going to just draw on.
No.
So, so we have a motion to postpone, we have a second, right, by Denise? Could we all, could we vote on the motion to postpone? All in favor, please raise your hand. Five in favor, okay, it's postponed, it'll be brought up at the next meeting. Thank you, thank you all for coming.
Thanks for coming.
Okay, let's go back up to the assistant superintendent. Is there-
I can't imagine, there's not much more I could say, with our principals didn't already cover, but I did want to just highlight two quick things. Jay did mention the REACH program, we did conclude last Thursday. He said 200, we actually had around 300 students, 36 camps run over, over five weeks. Doris DeMers served 60 to 70 lunches a day to kids throughout the program. Durham Parks and Rec ran an afternoon program, Monday through Thursday, all day Friday, they had, I don't even know exactly how many, but they went beyond their minimums and they were full. And in fact, Rachel, Rachel Gazowski was telling me that they were taking like double the number of kids they had last year. So it's clearly, it was a very successful program, congratulations. I do want to take this opportunity though, to particularly congratulate Deb Byrne, she's the, the REACH program coordinator. And she has been our REACH program coordinator for all nine years that REACH has existed. And she did break the news to me late in the summer that this was her last year as REACH coordinator. So I do want to congratulate her on her amazing work over all that time. I mean, hundreds and hundreds of kids over many years have had great experiences because of the great work of Deb Byrne. So, that's sort of my first plug to say I'm looking for someone who would be interested in being a REACH coordinator, and I will be, I'll be looking for someone to take that role. The second thing I did want to mention, which was also mentioned a little bit in our principals' comments, today was the deadline for all of our staff to provide us evidence of their two required professional days. You may recall last year, because of the snow days, we tried something new this year, where we had a kind of a flexible opportunity for professional staff to fulfill their remaining contract days. And so they, each, everybody put in a proposal to their principals, they were approved, and by today, they were providing the evidence. The evidence is immense, so I haven't, I can't tell you I've gone through it all, but I have had lots of conversations with their principals, and it's amazing the work that has gone on this summer. So I just want to say that was an incredibly effective way to utilize those two days. So certainly if, I don't, I'm not hoping for snow, but if the situation came up again-
It's a little early.
I would, I would suggest it was a very positive and productive use of time, and our teachers took it very seriously, and they combined it with some of the other proposed, paid professional activities and really did some amazing stuff. And so I commend our staff for that. And lastly, I just want to say, sitting there listening to our four principals talk about the work in their schools, it's incredibly proud experience to listen to them, and it's a, it's a great group to work with, so it's, so thank you.
Thank you. Superintendent?
Very good. So I just wanted to start by talking about enrollment. Jay gave you kind of an update on the middle school, he's, he's net up about 11 kids. Suzanne and I had a bet, I lost, I didn't think she'd cross the 800 line, she's at 814, so I owe her something, but I can't remember what we bet. But I'm sure she'll-
She was big, I bet it was big.
Like a car.
So, just to bring us back to our problem child, which is our elementary schools. So, at the bottom of the, in terms of enrollment, bottom of both your enrollment reports from Moharamet and Masway, you'll see that Masway has sent 14 students to, excuse me, Moharamet has sent 14 students to Masway. And you can see what's, what's occurring in grades two, three, and four. Your class size policy 2B or IIB gives you a recommended class size for grades two and three of 20. You can see that at Moharamet, just from the children who were there before, before we ended, has already exceeded that number. And when we started, the start of the summer, Carrie had room at the inn, and so we started sending kids in grades two, three, and four over to Masway, and you can see how quickly her numbers are filling. So, there's not much we can do in this particular school year to mitigate this issue, because we don't have any free classroom space. When Carrie's project is done, she'll have some flex space, maybe two classrooms. When we look at the Moharamet proposal, my proposal is to, to create some flex space at, at Moharamet as well, of about two classrooms. The issue is because we have our kids spread throughout the district, you know, we're, we're at the point where we're making some enrollment decisions that begin to be super uncomfortable. There was a point where a family moved in and one was a first grader at Moharamet, one was going to be a third or fourth grader at Moharamet. And David and Carrie and Todd and I sat down and really struggled with this issue of, well, you know, the fourth grader or third grader should have gone over to Masway, but then we would be splitting up a family. And we chose not to do that, and, you know, that is a tough decision when your class sizes are, are full. So we're seeing situations like that, we're seeing situations, of course, which we could have predicted, where people are buying homes very, very physically close to Moharamet, but we have to send them over to Masway. So we're, we're making really tough decisions and we don't really have a workaround or solution, and I'm not recommending one tonight. I'm just saying that, you know, as we look forward into the future, we've got to figure out a way of creating some flex space at both schools, so that we can address issues of overcrowding more effectively. And, you know, so this is going to be what it is, you know, if we have 10 kids move into grade four next week, they're going to end up in these two schools. You know, the suggestion of, of additional aides came up, but as I said, we would meet six of them, because every, if you have six classrooms, it absolutely would meet the same criteria. So, you know, these aren't extraordinarily large classes, you know, I remember a time when a class of fourth, fifth, and sixth graders are no water, 36 kids. The average class size in the state of California is, is over 30 kids. But this is, this is at the extreme end of where we want to be as a school board and where we want to be as a school system, and where we want to be as principals and teachers. So that's where we are, that's the reality. We've had quite a number of kids move in, we've had quite a number of kids move out, but we have zero flexibility in grades two, three, and four beyond, looks like four spaces at Carrie's in grade two, and one, two, three, four spaces in grade three, and two spaces in grade four. And that's, so if we end up with in migration in the next two weeks, we'll have Carrie's capacity as well as already having Matt David's. So, just laying that out, no magic bullet this time because of construction and, and space, but it's interesting, because David, you know, wanted to send a note home on enrollment, and he did. But if you think about it, it was only six years ago that the Moharamet school had 417 kids.
Wild.
Right? And so, you know, the number of kids has gone down dramatically, which is a good thing, because it now fit, the kids fit inside the building. But the, when you look at it from a per class basis, where, where, you know, the, the school is full.
I mean, at that point too, Masway, I think had dropped below 300. It's stunning with the change that's occurred.
Right. So, any questions on enrollment guys? Kenny?
Just one thing that stands out to me from numbers, and I don't know what it means, but last year at Masway, we had 71 kindergarteners, and this year, we have 51.
Yep, dramatic decrease in kindergarten enrollment, that wasn't projected in the long range plans, wasn't anticipated by either principal. We totally expected that the enrollment kindergarten would be very similar to what we've been seeing in second and third grade. So, now we have to watch that can to see if that's, becomes the new norm, or whether that's an aberration and it jumps back up the next year.
Exactly. You know, and Moharamet too, I think it's 52 down to 40.
Exactly.
That's right. And, and I think as you're saying, one year does not make a trend or pattern, and I think it points out the incredible difficulty in trying to manage the situation, not only classrooms, but staff.
Right.
And, and certainly anything we do that gives us flexibility makes us be able to accommodate. But I think the numbers, we just really have to pay attention to them and see where this is going.
Going on in my report, Todd alluded to it, and several of the principals alluded to it, the strategic plan. So we spent our second day together, full day together, working on the strategic plan administratively. I, I entered the day confident that we would meet our self-imposed deadline of getting the draft to the board by Thanksgiving. I'm comfortable we can do that. We will have draft- We will have drafts ready for staff input in September and October. So the principals and the directors are committed to bringing their goals to their staffs and getting feedback from our staffs. And we'll get the final draft to you by Thanksgiving. I'm really impressed with the work we're doing. You know, it started with the focus groups, and we articulated what those major themes were. The principals and the directors have done really good work. And so by the time you get it, what we're looking to do is create a standardized look to it all. So right now Suzanne's doesn't necessarily look like Jay's in format, and Jay's doesn't necessarily look like David's or Carrie's or Doris's or Jim's. By the time you get it, it'll look more uniform. And I'm just really thrilled with the progress we're making. I just think the administrators have been totally dedicated to getting this work done. I'm very pleased with them. Going on to construction, I gave you a memo on construction. I know that Carrie's, Carrie's school, the Masway school, is, you know, sort of the poster boy for construction. I just wanted to remind the board that we also did significant work at Moheramet in terms of the LED lighting and the windows. Carrie was the architect of getting kind of an evergreen frame to these windows to kind of match the New England evergreen window frame to the brick that, you know, kind of traditionally is a New England look. They're incredibly handsome. I'm so thrilled with the window choice. They look great. As Carrie said, she was sort of like hopping through her classes like a crazy person, which is kind of common for Carrie, playing with the lights and walking, walking in and seeing them come on automatically, and watching them go off automatically, and dimming them. The dimming feature at all three schools, so the high school and the two elementary schools, that dimming feature cannot be underestimated in terms of creating a, a really nice learning environment. And we had teachers who didn't use fluorescents, who used lamps in their classrooms to create a different atmosphere. They'll be able to create that atmosphere now, just through the lighting. And to, and to also think that, that is contributing to a better sustainability footprint in the, in the, the use of electricity and kilowatt hours. We expect to see that kilowatt hours will go down as a result of that effort. And, you know, not to leave Jay out, because, you know, he is the post, you know, kind of the stepchild of construction now, because we're trying to gear up for a whole new building. We did spend significant amount of time cleaning out his HVA system, ventilation system, as it goes into the classroom. And as he said to me, I don't know that it was ever done before. And so, I mean, that'll help the air quality in an old building, and I, I think it was, I'm really pleased that we did that.
Did they say how, how bad it was when they cleaned it out?
Jay, did you ever have a conversation with the contractor? Did he give you, or she give you an indication of how bad it was?
It was dirty.
And that's the kind of report I get from Jay every time I ask him for something. Thanks, Jay, for that very detailed report.
Yep.
In terms of opening the school, the reason I had the principals give you the memos in written form is because we will have open school by the time we have our second meeting in August. And I wanted to give you guys a sense of all the work that goes into opening school by each of our principals, by each of our directors. Lisa has been, as always, tirelessly trying to redo her routes. You'll have her proposed routes tonight. And as we opened school, we're still down two drivers, but remember, we were down six last year, throughout the year. And then sometimes during illness, we were as much as nine. So starting out with two short is a heck of a lot better than where we were. You won't see a significant difference in riding time, because part of that time was made up by Lisa and Nancy being drivers. So the bus routes are nearly finished, if not completely finished. But, you know, I know Lisa, she's given you a copy of it. She'll still be playing with these things all the way until the opening of school. She's always trying to get the most efficient routes possible, meaning the least amount of ride time for, for kids as possible. So that's coming up. I know that when you walk into the high school, you have typically walked into a high school that was all spit and shine and polished. It's also, if you walk into any of our buildings, including Carrie's, you know, this is the time when the custodial staff are in crunch time. They've done their classrooms, they're moving out in, into the hallways. So you'll start seeing all of this furniture that's out and about, placed back in, and the, and the, and the buildings and grounds will look as good as they always do on the opening of school. It just, this is the crunch time for the, for the staff. And in terms of Carrie's building, what Jim Rizicki has set up is that her lead custody and Dave will have extra help, because she's still an active, she still has an active construction site. And Dave, her lead custody, and has done a great job of going in behind people and cleaning up after them and so forth. But at some point, Jim Rizicki is just going to send extra help into Masway, because that's the building that will need the extra help as we get ready to open school. So that's really where we are right now in, in terms of construction and being ready to open school.
Okay. Okay. School nutrition lunch increase. We have the memo on that, which is a slight increase to put it in line with federal policy.
So have Doris speak to it?
Good evening. I always, I'm grateful for the opportunity to come in and speak with you. And for that reason, I added a few things that I thought would be interesting. That last year, we served 17,236 breakfast meals.
Wow.
And 127,605 lunch meals. In addition to that, we sell an extra 200, 21,759 breakfast entrees. Those are students that don't buy a complete meal. And 67,904 lunch entrees. Students and staff also purchased an additional 225,304 items. So my nutrition staff is very busy. I just thought that was pretty amazing when I went through those numbers. So every year, when I, every school district that runs the National School Lunch Program has to apply, put in a new application annually, because it's a government program, and they like paper. So we have required, one of the, one of the forms in the application is the PLE, which is a Federal Lunch Equity Form. And what that is, is students that have a full pay should not be paying less than the amount of a free lunch. So there's a form, and I gave you a copy of that. And when I put in all the lunches for October of 2017, and the prices that we had, which was 3.15 at the high school, 2.90 at the middle school, and 2.65 at elementarys, our weighted average price was 2.83. The requirement is 2.92. You can round down to 2.90, but we were still seven cents under. So my request is to increase, so we do have to go up, to increase prices by 10 cents for lunch only. Breakfast will stay the same. It will still be 1.25 K through eight, and 1.59 through 12. Lunch will go from 2.65 at elementary school to 2.75, from 2.90 to $3.00 at middle school, and from 3.15 to 3.25 at high school. So it's actually a nice rounded number. Also, it'll actually make it easier for making change at registers and expedite that. And I'm hoping that that will mean, by going 10 rather than 7, hopefully that will mean next year, that won't. But I know, I never know those numbers until they come up with the next, the equity number for the following year that we have to use. So that's what I'm asking for, is an additional 10 cents on lunches K through 12.
So we have a motion to approve this new price schedule. Denise?
I motion to approve the price schedule for the meals as presented.
Moved by Denise, seconded by Brian. Other questions for Doris? Hearing and others in favor, please raise your hand. Five in favor, the new prices are approved. Thank you for your work.
Thank you. If I can just mention one more thing. When I was invited to speak at the elementary school's PTO meeting, it came to my attention that a lot of parents do not realize that we serve breakfast at all four schools, and it's available for all students. They were not aware of that. And it's very affordable, $1.25 K through eight, 1.50 for high school. And in New Hampshire, we are second from the last for, in the, as, as a state, in the entire U.S. for breakfast participation. And there are studies that show that eating breakfast closer to the learning time actually really increases how much is retained. So it would be a really great thing to increase breakfast participation at our schools. It would be good for the students, it'd be good for our program as well. And if any parents have questions about that, they can call me. But it's available every day at all four schools.
Thank you, Doris.
Thank you.
Okay. Something about bus routes?
Yep. I would just say, normally Lisa would be here, but Sue will take it. Lisa's dealing with a very personal issue related to her mom, and so she asked if she could be excused tonight, and she's provided you with the recommended bus, bus routes as she sees them right now. And if you do have questions that Sue or I can't answer, we'll gladly take them down and have Lisa here at the next meeting.
Fair enough.
Any questions related to the bus routes that were provided?
Okay. Just trust her.
Yeah, good. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, there's no student senate report. We have the revised facility use agreement. Denise, I don't know if you want to speak to the changes that we've made in that, or...
So we just, we just made a few changes. Well, actually, first of all, Dr. Morris took the information that we had, or, or the suggestions that we had from the last meeting, and did make some changes. And then at policy committee meeting, we tweaked it. So, and I think it's, as far as, you know, the blue being the new information, I don't know if anyone has any particular questions. One of the things that we did do is make an exception, well, stated that there would be a possible exception for their certificate of insurance, as well as an exception for fees. So under that section, which is on page two...
That'd be of the policy, right?
Of page two of the policy.
That's correct. You know, under certificate of insurance, it now states that the superintendent may grant a waiver.
So if I can just jump on Denise's report. So the board directed me to try to make, to ensure that the actual policy, KF, was in line with the new use agreement. And they were concerned that there might be some missing pieces in the policy, because we attacked the use agreement, but we didn't attack the policy. So in the policy, what we did was we took exactly the language that was in the use agreement that referenced policy and put it in the policy. So for, for your purposes, anything in blue is aligning now with the new use agreement, and that language largely came from the use agreement that you saw. The reason I'm sharing that is, tonight, as I said last meeting, I need to be able to sit with those organizations that spend a lot of time, like, like every day, every month, utilizing our facilities and explain the new agreement and the ramifications of the new agreement. So essentially, you know, the policy and the use agreement now are saying that if you're a regular user of our facility, and the regular users would be like Growing Places, Live and Learn, ORYA, and there may be others, but those are our major users. When they're using our facility, they're going to comply with our policies and procedures related to all the laws, federal laws, that we're required to adhere to. So really, the whole idea behind this change is to protect the school system, because we ended up in a situation of, not of our making, but of, of one of our users. And we ended up having a Office of Civil Rights complaint lodged against the school system. And the reason it was lodged against the school system is because none of the, none of the organizations that use the facility fall under the Office of Civil Rights. We do. And as a result, we had to comply with the Office of Civil Rights, even though it wasn't our organization. And that was costly to the district. The new use agreement would say that should anything like that happen again, you're going to pay the freight, and if you can't pay the freight, then you can't use the facility. I mean, it's just really, we don't charge much for any of these organizations to use our facilities, and then to be caught with an OCR complaint that, that cost us legal fees, just didn't make sense to me as a superintendent. So the policy and the agreement are lined up now. And so I need, I need to be able to go forward from tonight with these approved. I guess it's what, the short story.
Okay. So I'm going to say, on the use agreement, if you go down to number five, which is policies, and you go down to the link that you did, which is www dot, that's a broken link, there's actually a space between school and board.
It's a hyphen, right?
Yeah, yeah. So this is, it doesn't work, you need to fix that link. That'll take you to the policy page.
Thank you, Al.
Yeah. And then the only other thing, my suggestion there is, okay, so you, it takes you to the policy page, and it dumps you to the policy page, and you can't tell which, it's like, is it a A, is it a C? So can you cross-reference the policies that you really think, that you want them to look at?
Absolutely.
So for example, KF is a clear one, but you already have put AC, so we really want to direct them so that they know which policies they really need to look at. So that, that's really all I had on the...
Yeah, that's a great idea.
The use one. Do you want me to attack the policy itself, KF, or do you want to wait till we do the policies?
I talked to Dan on the phone, and he said that he thought that there should be a requirement that if policy was violated, if any school policy was violated, it should be reported directly. So I don't know if that goes into the policy, or if that goes into the use agreement.
I did, I mean, so Kenny and I are actually doing this exact same thing. We're writing the facilities use policy for Durham. And I went, and I saw that you added stuff into policy, and I'm sorry to keep skipping around here, but in policy KF, you added a complaints section in there. Let me get this to come up and let...
Yeah.
So I, the only thing is, and again, what would, what would policy be without somebody wordsmithing a little bit? So when you got down to the complaints, the only, the only change I made, and this is what I wrote for, I suggested for Durham and for Parks and Rec, because it's the exact same thing, and, because the, the town lawyer kind of was like, when we talked about investigation, it kind of ruffled her a little. It was like, wait a second. So what I wrote for the Parks and Rec, I said, "All incidents that violate Durham, Parks and Rec, and Durham Town standards must be reported. Durham reserves the right to examine the incident and determine if it impacts future facility use." I think that's just a nicer way of saying it. So in this way, we could just say, "All incidents that violate ORCSD policy, or, policy must be reported. ORCSD reserves the right to examine the incident and determine if it, if it impacts future facilities use." It really, I mean, we don't have to tell how we're going to investigate it, if it's a third-party investigation. It's just that we reserve the right to look it over, and our looking it over will determine if it's futurely used. So that's just...
So do you think that follows, like, the, in the complaint section?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Could I just, could I just follow?
Yeah.
If you kept that first line...
Yeah, it's the same.
Yes.
Then, then add that second sentence that you had.
Yes.
Would that work?
Yes, perfectly. That's what I was thinking.
And I'm wondering whether that should also be repeated in the...
I think so. I think it should be in the use agreement.
In the use agreement as well?
Yeah. I mean, we're, we're, I threw in there that you're referencing KS, but I think you should just put it in the use agreement, because it makes it crystal clear what we're saying.
So have it in both places?
Yeah.
So that, if an incident occurs, and then have that second sentence?
Yes.
Now, do you, do you have the second sentence?
So the second sentence would be that ORCSD reserves the right to examine the incident and to determine if it impacts future facility use.
Okay. So if something's egregious, and you say, look, that's it, you know?
So I have a question.
Yeah?
So are you under, and I am looking under the complaints, are you, are we going to keep one, two, and three? I mean, I understand you're adding that...
I actually, I'm changing three, really. I was kind of...
You're dropping two and three.
Yeah.
So we're dropping three, but it does, but what you just said doesn't say anything about an independent third party.
It doesn't. It's, I didn't, I don't think we, do we need that level of specificity? What we're really saying is that we're going to investigate it, and how we investigate it really is...
Gives us our right.
It's our right. It's, I think that, that covers all we need. In terms of two, I don't, I'm ambivalent either way. Do you really need... Do you really need, I mean, of course, we're going to probably do that, but I mean, to me, the most important things is one, and then the sentence I just added in.
Yeah, because I think, because I think we added that in our meeting because we thought we don't want to have immediately go to, like, the cost of that stuff.
I know.
So I think, so you're saying, so essentially with complaints, we just have those two sentences that we drop two and drop three.
Yeah.
So everybody get that?
Can you read that second sentence again, please?
Let me see if I've got it. Let me see if I've got it, Al. Okay, so Al is suggesting that we replace two and three. So two and three would be dropped, Laura. ORCSD reserves the right to examine the incident and determine if it impairs further facilities use.
Impacts.
Impacts, impacts further facilities use.
And should that also, that exact wording go in...
And move that same language into the...
Into the policy?
Well, that's, Al was talking about policy, but...
I mean, and the use agree, and the use, it should be in both places.
It should be both places.
I think so.
Okay.
But is that the only thing? Because all it's saying is reserve the right to future use, but is that the only, like, is that the only possible outcome? I'm, you know what I mean? Is that, like, too specific? Are there...
No, I mean, again, we will, the incident, we'll look at the incident, we can say, if you make, I mean, it gives us an immense amount of flexibility. We could say, "Okay, you're going to have to do these things to do future use," or we could say, "It's so egregious, no, you can't do the use." I think that is for us to determine. That's what it really is saying.
Or to launch an investigation.
Yeah, however we want to.
However we want to do it.
What it really does, it gives Jim a lot of flexibility, how he handles it, so.
Okay. So is that clear? So that, so we're talking about amending this with that change?
If you guys were, I mean, I was just...
I think, I think that's necessary. I think Dan was, Dan was, also thought that would be important.
It just took me a little while, because we were, again, we were doing it on the town side, and I thought this, I just thought it sounded...
So I would lift that language and put it into the use agreement probably right after insurance complaint. Three of five. I'd make a new number, ten, and then renumber them, and put that language in.
Okay. I would have put it under policies, because it's a violation of policy.
What?
I don't actually have that one.
What page?
That is...
It's number five.
It's five, I'd make page two.
Because you're saying you should operate in a manner that conforms with policy, then you say violation of policy, it feels like, seems sequential to that, like, right in here?
Okay, thanks, Tom. I kept on flipping back and missing it.
I agree, right. In five.
Yeah. So are we all clear on that change?
Mm-hmm.
I, I had one just self-serving other change. I'm, I was just surprised that I, the school board chair would sign off on every use agreement. I think this superintendent...
Yeah, that just...
I mean...
What page is that on?
That's on five. I mean, it seems like, you really, you really don't want to track me down to get whoever, you know?
Right.
So it'd be you, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so superintendent. Okay. So are there other, are we ready? So, so the policy committee thought that, really, we have looked at this once, you know, we didn't call it a first read, but it was essentially a first read. We made these changes, so we're approving this technically for first and a second read. Is that right, Denise?
Yes.
Okay. So do we have to do that sequentially, or could we have a motion to approve it for first and second read?
How do, how do we just do first read first and then second read second?
Go ahead.
Let's just, okay, so I'll make a motion to approve the facilities use agreement and policy KF for first read.
Okay, so, okay, moved by Al.
Al's second.
Second by Denise.
I'm sorry, just before you voted anything, I just wanted to point out a couple of quick things, they're minor things, but in the use agreement, on page one, it still has 2:45 is the end of school time, and it says the room will be available...
I caught that, actually, before, I was like, wait a second.
So 3:15?
So we should change it to 3:15. And there was some question from the administrative team about what the, in that same sentence where it says, "Monday through Friday for use by organizations as homework rooms." We're not quite sure...
I was wondering that, too.
What that means. I mean, certainly I understand them, the space being available after school, I think that's what that was intended to say, so 3:15 would be the appropriate time. The homework room thing, I...
Just drop it.
Just say, "Drop it."
Just drop it.
Okay. For use by the organization as homework rooms, that's, that should be dropped.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm sorry about that, the interruption, but I, from an elementary perspective, we have students in our classrooms until about 3:30 because of buses, so not to be picky, but...
Maybe we just should say after school.
Yeah.
And take the time out.
When students have vacated or something like that.
Yeah.
I wonder if we should add, "Adequate space may be made available," instead of "show." Because "show" implies that we're here absolutely, so, is that all right?
Tom's a good teammate.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So that sends it reading, "In addition, adequate space may be made available at 3:15 Monday through Friday."
We just said after school, Monday through Friday. Take out the time.
So maybe I'm missing it, but what about weekends? People use our school for activities sometimes on weekends.
Yeah, but that's not a school day activity when it's weekends. So they do request to use it weekends, it's going through the facilities department. This is specifically talking about after school.
Okay.
But don't we want to make sure that that similar language that we capture also is going to be applicable to weekend users?
Yeah.
We, we... Can I just...
Denise, I'm sorry.
Yeah. So we talked about how, really, what we need, what we usually do, we approve the policy. And we did talk about, there was actually a sample that Dr. Morris had, oh, it was the town one, that the town uses for other groups.
Yeah, I was going to talk about that.
Right. So we talked about maybe having a different version of the space use agreement that was more appropriate for other types of groups, but this one is primarily addressing the after-school groups. That's really what this space use agreement is really geared for, is the after-school groups.
Yeah, except that ORYA uses us after school if available, they also would use us on weekends if available. So I think it just takes a request for weekend use will be addressed through the facilities department.
Okay.
And that, the scare that can...
And is there a place where fees are, I know it's not in the procedure...
It's another whole R document, just on fees.
Okay.
Yeah.
So is there, is there additional wording you're putting?
Yeah, I'm just going to add, "Weekend use will be addressed through the facilities department."
That's, that's in addition to the, okay, okay. So with those changes, do we have, do you have that last change? Okay. So are we ready to vote on this?
Wait one second, Tom. I just want to look at one thing. Just trying to find that page. Because the policy is a policy for all. It doesn't say school day after school.
Right.
So I just think we should name it instead of space use agreement to differentiate space use agreement for school day per after, because we, you're saying we're going to have two different, we're going to have, there's a different process if you're using the facility in the afternoon of a school day, as opposed to using the facility, facility during a vacation week or on a weekend. And so we're going to have two...
The process would be the same, Ken, it's just who's going to deliberate on approval.
Right.
So if it's school day issue, David and Carrie and Suzanne and Jay would, but if it's a weekend issue, then it would go to Jim Rizicky and he would, or Andy.
So let's just title this one, "Space Use Agreement for School Day Use of Facility."
But didn't you add, like, the language covers that?
I think so, but I'm just trying to listen to what Kenny is saying. What, I'm sorry, Ken.
So the, the policy is all set, the, it's the usage agreement, and there'll really be two different usage agreements. And so this one should be labeled "Space Use Agreement for Use of Facilities on School Days After School," to distinguish it from the weekend one that we will have. Does that make sense?
Well, I was thinking it could be the same agreement. You could have a checkbox at the front where it would be, "I'm looking to use the classroom after school," or "I'm looking to use the field on a weekend," because the form itself wouldn't change.
And that, that's fine by me, but then should we change the language where this one just refers to Monday to Friday?
Well, I did. Yeah, remember, this is the R document, and so I have all kinds of flexibility there. It's the policy that I don't get to change, but when you guys talked about weekend use, I added a sentence on weekend use.
Okay, so that will...
So that's in there now?
Okay, all right. So I just didn't know that that was going to be done.
Right. And then I just wanted to add one more thing to the conversation before we do vote. Kenny brought up, I thought was a very clever idea. The town deals in permits, you know, we deal in approval forms. And, you know, in our conversation in policy, pretty lengthy conversation about, you know, what if it's a one-off use, as opposed to, this is really designed for someone who, or some organization is going to use us consistently. And Kenny provided us with a document the town uses, which is called a permit, and it's in a bridged version of this. And essentially, you know, I would want to go in and do some presentation in a classroom, and it's that one time. And so this really does, and I think Tom brought this home in policy, reflects an organization that uses us constantly, and we need to have an abridged version of this for somebody who's just coming in and saying, "Can I use your classroom to do a presentation for whatever?"
So is that going to come before us, or...
No, I don't think so, because it's just in our document, I'll just create a permit based on what Kenny gave us, unless you guys want to see it. But I think we managed to freshen this out well.
And I think, and I think the issue of, you know, policy, you know, following policy is, that's the key thing. So I think we had a motion to...
Pass, yeah, for first read.
For both the policy...
And the use agreement.
And the use agreement for first read.
Yeah.
That was moved by Al, right?
Al and seconded by Denise.
Seconded. Are we ready to vote on that? Okay, all those in favor, please raise your hand. Five in favor, they've approved for first read. Then we have a...
Okay, so I'll make a motion to approve the space use agreement and policy KF for second read.
Moved by Al, seconded by Denise. We're okay to vote on that? All those in favor, raise your hand. Five in favor, okay.
Thank you.
All right. Catch your breath.
Denise.
Denise.
Okay. We had school board goals, which we discussed at the last meeting. There was one addition, Dr. Morris, that I think I was asking for, that you incorporated in these, which was to, let's see if I can find it.
It's about the diversity.
Diversity, yeah. That, that, to work to diversify the faculty, you know, to be more, you know, develop a plan to, for recruitment, so that we could begin to, at least attempt to hire a more diverse staff. So I'm sorry, I shouldn't...
Yeah, it's on page two, it's right here.
Yeah.
Development to become diverse staff.
Yeah, so that was added. And I wanted to, I think there was a general, the sense of the meeting was people were pretty...
Wrap around this up. Dan and Michael stressed the board part in the last meeting.
Yeah.
But the same thing we're doing for Dan and Michael for next meeting they were doing for you, Ken, and they wanted to make sure that you were as comfortable as they were.
Denise?
I'd like to make a motion to adopt the 2018, 2019 school board goals as presented.
Moved by Denise, is her second? Second by Brian? Further discussion on these?
And I watched the tape, and I thank you all for waiting. So just, just a few thoughts. With the presentation items and the way that they're scheduled, and I think that makes a lot of sense to me, I still feel, I don't know, I think we do an amazing job with curriculum and education, and, and I think we're really moving in a wonderful direction with the mental health piece and kind of wellness and well-being. I still, but because I think that's such a big item, I would still love to see that be its own individual goal and kind of break that out, rather than just it being listed as a...
Report?
One of the presentation items that would be done at the October meeting.
So, so can I react to that, Ken?
Sure.
I, I think it's appropriate to come in as a report, because it was a major goal for several years, and it's, it's well-rooted now, so we're not walking away from it. It's very integral to the work we've been doing on the strategic plan. And, you know, we, we actually did two reports last year related to that one issue. And part of what I talked about at the end of last year was the idea of touching base on these issues multiple times in a year. So when you see the building's goals, you'll see it there, when you see the strategic plan, you'll see it there. So I don't think it needs to stand as its own major goal anymore. I think it's, we're into a continuing effort, and we haven't let go of it. And in fact, we talked extensively, the first thing we talked about this morning in our strategic planning process was that issue.
Okay.
And I think, Ken, when you see in the end of October, the work we've done around the strategic plan and mental health and wellness, it's evolving into, you know, a more systemic approach. I think for the, as we got our feet under us, it became, it started out as more event-oriented. We're seeing a synergy between the elementary, middle school, and high school first time. In fact, the most interesting question, one of the more interesting questions that happened today was from Suzanne, and she said, "I really need to know what's happening in fourth grade in social-emotional learning in order to inform five years later what's going to happen at the high school." So it's a very integral part of our conversation now, as much as we talk about math or any of the content areas, it's, it's there, Ken. So I don't think you need to worry about it being a board goal, because it's part of what we're doing.
Okay. And my second thing, and it wouldn't be discussing board goals if I didn't bring it up again, and I know there's no traction, but I think people work incredibly hard in our transportation system. I think our transportation system, though, again, should be evaluated. I don't think it's environmentally friendly, and I don't think we're really, I think there's, might be a better way for us to meet the needs of the kids and parents in our districts without some of the long bus rides we have. So I just said that every year, and it's, I realize it's just me thinking that, but I...
So you're talking about express buses, where there's...
To look at that model and to, I think, well, I think it starts with a survey, and a survey to ask the parents of our district, "How well does our transportation system meet your needs? In what way doesn't it meet your needs?" Ask for suggestions and kind of make that a, kind of a study project. I'm, you know, I, you know, we all know that traffic backs up down Madberry Road. Those are people not taking the bus. Those are people sitting in cars, idling, burning fossil fuels, and taking a lot of time out of their day to line up. I mean, they're, they line up over 20 minutes early, and it takes a long time to go through. And I think there's similar situations. Our elementary school kids are on buses a long time, and our school day is long. So, and, and maybe we're doing it absolutely the best way we could possibly do it, but I think it's just something to worth a look at. It's a big portion of the day, transportation, and we're doing everything to make that school day right. And it just, part of me thinks, "Let's extend it to that," but again, that's just me, so.
You know, I'm kind of intrigued by, I mean, I know that you've presented it multiple times, Ken, over the years, and, you know, I know on a day-to-day operational method, Lisa doesn't have the time to do that, so it would require us doing a study, and it would require us doing surveys. And so I'm wondering if it makes sense as a budget item in, when we meet in October, to set aside a certain amount of money to do a study on the transportation system, just to figure out if there is a better way. I mean, I've done this for four decades, and I am trapped in the same system that we currently use. So maybe my mind is boxed in by 40 years, you know, and there may be different ways we could be doing business. I think it would be worth an investigation.
And so we could talk about at budget time whether we want to include that as --
In the meantime, if I know that's coming up, I can reach out to different organizations to see if anybody has any recommendations as to who could do such a study and, you know, what kind of money it would cost.
Yeah.
And maybe, I mean, before you start investing your time, is this something other people are interested in? Because if not, then you shouldn't spend your precious time on that as well.
I think, I think, I mean, it's a difficult issue, but I think, like you say, that it's, you hear about it a lot. You know, people, long bus rides, you know, the line up in the middle school. So I think, I think it's worth asking questions just because the sheer amount of time these kids are on the bus, you know, is there, you know, maybe there's not a better way. But it doesn't, I think, to ask it and to put somebody in to study it, I think it makes sense, you know?
If we don't challenge ourselves, we're going to constantly --
Because otherwise, you don't, I mean, Lisa does a great job, but I mean, if you have the same model and you keep doing it and doing it, and you know, it's, I think, to shake things up and at least ask some questions about it.
I mean, and I think of the years that I've been on the school board, I think the thing that, to me, is, that I appreciate so much is how much we challenge ourselves and try to look at things, and we make changes. And we look at options and start time or, you know, the way our curriculum is. And I just, I think that's such a strength that we have, is that we don't just stumble along. We try to look and do the best we can, so.
So would that be satisfactory if we?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. So we have, I think, we have a motion, right, on the floor?
I motion. Yeah, I motion.
Yeah. Did he send Brian? Did he send Brian?
Okay. So are we ready to vote on these then? Okay. All those in favor of adopting the goals as presented, please raise your hands. Five in favor, the goals are adopted.
Thank you.
Maybe just one small thing, and I think we'll take a break because it's almost nine o'clock. I would just like permission from the board to write, it's not an opt-ed piece, an op-ed piece. Kind of an opt, maybe it's an opt-ed piece, I don't know. In which, you know, like for fosters and to redistribute it, in which I, you know, kind of report on the board's decision to go forward with the building of a new middle school. I think this is a big decision we've made, and I'd like to get it out there kind of when school starts. I would want to use the information that's available, you know, from the report. So I don't, you know, I'm not going to freelance around and, you know, bringing all kinds of other things, because I think, I think that the case is made, you know, and the various reports that we've had come from the architect and from the facilities report that we saw the last meeting. So if I could, I'd just like to move that I write an op-ed piece that I distribute so that we can get that and make people aware that the facilities committee did meet for the year, did come up with that report, that the board did go forward, and we're going to move forward, you know, with the hiring of an architect and a site manager, just to get that on, you know, create an awareness. I think we're so totally aware because we've been thinking about it for so long, but I think, you know, to get that.
Second.
Okay, second.
I think you have to let them know too that who was on the committee, people from the --
Yeah, yeah. So wide representation on that committee.
I think they got to know that.
Yeah, yeah.
So I think we're doing it on our own.
Yeah. I mean, there's a whole process, you know, a whole sequence of steps that have led up to the decision that we made the last meeting. And so, Denise?
And just a question in terms of distribution, and are you thinking obviously like fosters?
Sure. When Tom writes it, the logical is Seacoast and fosters, but I'll use our PR person and get it in, get it widely distributed. Now, it'll be up to the newspapers, of course, whether they choose to print it or not, but...
Okay.
And I think we should do a link in Friday Updates and Crier and that Madberry Newsletter too, and try to incorporate that as well.
Okay. So we vote? All those in favor, raise your hand. Five? Okay. I'll go get writing. Okay. Why don't we take a break, five minutes right now, and then we can, I think, a lot of smaller actions to take.
We have to double back.
Okay. I actually skipped over, but I think it's probably just as well, because we want to talk more extensively about this. The administrative support for athletic, for the athletic director. Dr. Morris, you want to talk about that? We have a short memo as well in the back.
You have a hard copy memo in your packet from Andy directly, and you had one in your computer packet from Suzanne. I just want to reintroduce the issue. This issue was actually introduced by Dan, and it's unfortunate that he's not here. When he asked me the question, I was, I guess, the way I would characterize it is I was a bit dismissive of it, and I regretted that almost instantly because I started thinking about the work that Andy does, and it dovetailed into the auditorium. And so I'm going to connect the dots and see if it makes sense to you. The auditorium is in tremendous demand, and we have no one on a day-to-day basis who can monitor the room. And, you know, for simple things like using it as a classroom presentation for Shakespeare or using it for a classroom presentation in public speaking, the auditorium is in such demand in the evening that often the demands of the evening supersede it being used as a day program because there's no one to orchestrate the coordination. So, well, you know, why can't Suzanne and her staff do it? Well, Suzanne and her staff are right out straight. And I combine that idea with Dan's idea, which is the idea that Andy needs support. And going back to the policy and procedures we just adopted related to training, you know, Catherine and Andy would be directly involved in training people who would be using our facilities to ensure they know what those policies are. It's not just a list, but they actually have to go through them and have a better understanding of what we expect of them. And that was the nexus for Dan's comment, you know, does Andy need support? I would also tell you that in my exit interview of Brian, I asked him what we could do to support the next AD, and his response was, you need administrative support, Jim. And so I'm recommending tonight that the board consider hiring clerical help for Andy that can be used by Suzanne to monitor the auditorium. And I've asked Suzanne and Andy to speak to the issue, so.
So as you can see in the memo that I included in your packet, the facility use in the high schools, as you know, is quite high, and the faculty, as Dr. Morris mentioned, the faculty would like, they are looking to have access. And some of the dilemma is that there is setup going on for evening events, which are variety of events that are occurring throughout the school year. And that sometimes makes it difficult for us to determine whether or not we can use the stage, depending on the scaffolding and the staging and what can be moved and what can't be moved, and what we can access and what we can't access. And not having somebody in the building to be able to ask those questions makes it really difficult for me to be able to make those determinations. And what ends up happening a lot of times is faculty does not end up having access to the space, and we end up having to find alternative space for them. So the, having help with the facilities in the building with the faculty, I think, would be just very beneficial for us to access the auditorium on a daily basis. And then in speaking with Andy and Cory, when Cory left last year, I know that there's a lot of facility pieces that go along with the athletics as well, use of the gymnasium, use of the field, just organizing that, clerical pieces. And I see Andy spending a lot of time on clerical pieces of his job. And as he says, you know, at three o'clock, I want to be outside or on the court or at the, wherever, at the arena or wherever the kids are, instead of on the phone trying to figure out who's taking what group on what buses and making sure that coaches have the transportation they need and have access to the things that they need. So, and I can let him speak about that a little more.
Yeah, I mean, I think Suzanne said it pretty well. There's a, and I'm no different than any other athletic director in the state of New Hampshire, there's, the job is, there's a tremendous amount of clerical work if it's, you know, if it's not buses or game confirmations, or paying officials, things like that. It's, you know, it's dealing with the NHIAA. There's a lot of paperwork that goes through with that. And, you know, I think some clerical support would allow me to spend a little less time on those things and a little more time with the coaches and the kids. That's one of the things that I put in my self-evaluation is, I feel like I need to be more present with the, and more of a mentor to the younger coaches. And I, you know, having a little less of that stuff would certainly benefit me to be able to do that. You know, I'm supervising close to 60 coaches, and I need to evaluate them. And that's, it can get challenging at times to get out there in the afternoon with, you know, with the, some of the things that go along with it, but, yeah.
Questions for Suzanne, Andy, myself?
Okay, Brian?
Is this looking, you looking for a part-time person, or how many hours a week?
I think it would be a full-time school year. So that'd be like a 10-month position instead of a 12-month position, as much like the second secretary at each school is a school year employee.
And is that feasible in our budget?
Yeah, but I just went reviewed with Suzan, Susan, the cost savings from hiring this summer. And our savings amount to about $176,000 in savings in terms of the principals and directors hiring people that were less costly than those who retired or left. And so we are in a good place in the personnel line, and so I'd ask the board to allow me to go forward and hire support for Andy and Suzanne.
Well, I think I kind of, in my mind, when we were going through the facilities use policy, particularly since we're having increased, well, scrutiny to the policy, I was like, we're going to have to hire somebody. There's just, it just makes sense in terms of facilities-wise. You need somebody to be able to sit down and say, oh, by the way, make sure you read policy KF and all that. Aside from the other stuff you do, it's like, the worst thing that happens when you keep adding one more thing to people's plate and they, they're already maxed out, then it means we can't get the level of scrutiny we wanted. So I think it's just a natural occurrence of filling a need that we had. We've made do with it, but I think it makes a lot of sense to do it.
And if I could just add on to Al's, we used to have this position. It was one of the first positions that, six years ago, Todd and I cut at that point because we were, you know, under the gun to get the budget into a place where it was more reasonable in terms of previous budgets, along with other positions. But this position used to exist and hasn't existed for the last six years, and we would like to bring it back.
I think I would like to see some numbers in terms of just how much, you know, what level the person is, how much you're paying this person. So I would, I'd want to see that before I would approve it.
Okay.
And I'd be fine to vote on it at the next meeting, but I don't think we should just vote on a position without numbers attached to it. Denise?
And as far as the hours, so this person would be working during the daytime and providing?
Yes.
So this isn't an evening, this isn't an evening type of?
No, this is school day.
It's a school day? Okay.
And would you be sharing it equally? How would, or would a person be, you know, how would that work? Because it sounds like there's kind of two jobs here, right?
They are. I think they're, I do think that they're, I do think that they're connected, though, because --